Hi, we're on. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the December 4th, 2013 meeting of the City of Brookhaven Planning Commission. I'm Stan Siegel and I'll be presiding this evening. Can you hear me okay back there? I've got myself connected up. This public meeting has been called on matters pursuant to the Brookhaven zoning ordinance and specified on tonight's agenda. There are copies, should be copies of an agenda back there on the back table. And if you plan on speaking this evening, you'll need to fill out a comment card before you come up. So those should be on the back table as well. So with December 4th, 2013, meeting is called to order. As a way of introduction this evening, we have seven members normally. As a way of introduction, I'm going to call the roll and have each commissioner acknowledge their presence, just so you know who we all are, although we have our names in front of us. So Commissioner Shannon Cameron.
President.
Okay. Commissioner John Funny.
President.
Commissioner John Hess.
President.
Commissioner Jack Hunderd.
President.
I'm Stan Siegel. I'm here. And Commissioner Rob Francore and Commissioner Adrian Schmidt are absent tonight. So we have five of us here and that means, let the record show, we have a quorum this evening. I'd also like, before we get started, to recognize Ms. Susan Cannon, who's Director of Community Development for the City of Brookhaven, and Ms. Ben Song. And I don't know what your title is. Planner, is that, is it planner?
Planning.
Planning and zoning for the City of Brookhaven. So that's who's here. Ask everybody to check their pockets and turn off your cellphones, please. I always forget.
And we also have John Olson here with us tonight.
I'm sorry. I apologize. John will be taking electronic notes.
And he is also a planner.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, John. Okay. Mentioned that the copies of the agenda and related documents are in the back of the room. And again, if you're making a comment, we'd ask you. We'll make a brief announcement, just to kind of tell you a little bit about the Planning Commission, for those who haven't been a part of this process before. The Planning Commission is established by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brookhaven. We conduct public hearings on land use, zoning changes, code text amendments, and other related matters. This commission does not rezone property, but rather is an advisory board which reports its findings and recommendations for consideration of action to the mayor and the city council of Brookhaven. I'd also like to say that in making our recommendations, we do our utmost to balance the land use with the interests of the applicant, the neighboring community, and the entire City of Brookhaven. The commissioners are all intimately familiar with our city. We're all residents of the city. And although not everyone will agree with the decisions we make this evening, know that each of the members are voting to make Brookhaven a better place to live and work. We're doing the best we can with this. I'd also like to, something is that we're going to take a little aside here on the agenda. We have, there are seven members of this commission, and it's been an exciting year for the city. We have residents from all over across the city who have volunteered their time in lots of various capacities, including the members of this commission. The members of this commission will always be able to say that we were the first planning commission for the City of Brookhaven. No one will ever be able to take that away from us. Three of our members, Commissioner John Hess, Commissioner Jack Hunderd, and Commissioner Adrian Schmidt, will end their term after this meeting, this December. So on behalf of Mayor Davis, the city council, the city staff, members of this commission, residents of our city, I'd like to say thank you for the job, for a job well done. We really benefited from your time and your expertise. And we have, the city has arranged, we have a token of our appreciation for you. Are you Jack, or are you, no, I'm just kidding. Jack, anyway. Again, the first planning commissioner for the City of Brookhaven. John? The first planning commissioner? The first planning commissioner? And we'll ask Susan if you have something, comments you'd like to make.
Yes. From a staff perspective, what I'd like to let you know is that we see the value that each one of you bring to the table. And it's interesting to watch your different personalities and the expertise you have. And from John Hess's perspective, what I've noticed about you is that you are kind of, you have the direct approach, you don't beat around the bush, and you're a linear thinker. And we appreciate that very much, and that's the value that you bring to us, among other things. And from Mr. Hunderd's perspective, you bring both the technical expertise and the bigger picture expertise, and the ability to look at things from a much larger angle. So we appreciate that you've brought that to us as well. So we commend you and appreciate what you've done, look forward to working with you on many other things in the future with the city. We have a lot of things happening, and we hope that you're involved in that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. It really is exciting. The first planning commissioner.
With your permission, I'd like to address the staff. The feeling's mutual. I think you guys have done a wonderful job, I mean, just dealing with Becky today, or you guys are very well prepared. And it's been a pleasure to work with you and the mayor on the staff. And just like the chairman said, we've tried our best, and I've been very impressed with everybody on the staff and on the commission, and it's been a pleasure. So thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, then, we appreciate your indulgence. This is, it's exciting for us. It's exciting for the city, and it's exciting as a neighbor to have everybody. So, all right, we'll get right into the agenda. So we've taken, we've called the meeting to order. We are official. We have a roll call, and we have a quorum. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for September 4th. These are the work session meeting minutes, and they should be in our packet. It's December 4th. Do I have a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the September 4th, 2013 Planning Commission work session.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. September 4th, Planning Commission work session meeting minutes have been approved, and now we have approval of the September 4th, the regular meeting minutes. Those also should be in your package, in your packet. Do I have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Somebody. This is not controversial.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for approval. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have approval of the September 4th, 2013 Planning Commission regular meeting minutes. Okay. On to organizational and procedural items. We have in your packet, and let's be sure, double check, because we had a correction, and this would be adoption of the 2014 land use process and meeting calendar. Becky After sent out on December the 2nd a correction. So if you'd kind of look and see if it's, if you've all got the right, the correct one. So our first meeting will be on January, no, let's see. Where am I?
It's not on there. The January meeting's not on there.
No, because it's on the last one. All right, but the first, all right, so we all, do we all have the one that's stated?
Yes.
The corrected one?
Yes.
All right, so do I have a motion to adopt the calendar, the 2014 land use process and meeting calendar?
I'll make a motion to adopt the calendar.
Okay. We have a second, a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have an adoption of the 2014 land use process and meeting calendar, as sent out by Becky After.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also point out that we were trying, we try to be very mindful of some of the issues we had last year with holidays and July 4th and all those things. So we were very careful to plan around that as best we could in that calendar.
That's a very, that's a very good point, because I do remember that we had our first meeting was one day after something.
Right.
And I noticed, I noticed on this calendar, you were careful so the public would have plenty of time and not get caught on a day before a holiday or anything like that.
Right, we tried to be careful of that.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. All right. The next item is another organizational item, and it has to do with rules and procedures for the Planning Commission. And we had adopted a set of procedures in our first meeting, and this is a modification to clarify. Now, we have been operating, I'll tell the, we have been operating, at each meeting, we have been adopting the procedures that you're about here. Now, we're formalizing them so we don't have to each time take and do that. So Susan, you want to go through these really quickly, or would you like me to do it?
Well, the actual procedural change is that we were operating with the applicant having 10 minutes, those in favor having 10 minutes, and those opposed having 10 minutes. And the actual procedures were lumping the applicant and those in favor as proponents, whereas we were separating that out, in that an applicant has 10 minutes, and whatever part of their 10 minutes that they don't use, they have the right for rebuttal. And then proponents would be those that would speak in favor of the application, so we were using 10 minutes. And then those in opposition had 10 minutes. So that's basically the change that has occurred in your procedures, just to clarify the practice that we have been using.
I'm going to go through that again, just before we get started, so everybody understands exactly what you get in our public hearing. So we have the, this is a change, again, it's a modification, it's just a clarification of what we have been, in fact, the way we have been operating. So if you've gone over that, I'll ask if we have a motion on this, or if there's any questions or any comment that I might like to make.
I move that we accept the changes to the Planning Commission rules and procedures as described by our chairman and our director of community development.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor of adopting the procedures and the Planning Commission rules and procedures? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nope. Okay, so these new rules and procedures will be in place, and we will be operating on those. Let me, before we, and so we have any unfinished business? I don't think so. I think that was it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that we will be sending to the commission the work session schedule for the year 2014. We discussed it in our work session. We did not have a chance to put that together for all of you, but we will prepare that for you before, in the next week, and we will send it out to you so that you can have that on your calendars for 2014.
Right, and you did discuss it, I was not in attendance.
We did discuss that in the work session.
Fine, that's great. All right, wonderful. Good. All right, so before we get our first case, before we start, and we'll get into that, I'd like to kind of just give you a brief of what the, what we just said about the procedures, because if you, I doubt that you went through and read them in great detail as we did. So when we, when a case comes up, first thing that's going to happen is the city staff will present the case and any recommendations that they want to make to the Planning Commission. The applicant or their representative will then have, as was said, a total of 10 minutes to present their, the application to us. You can use all 10 minutes upfront, or the applicant can say, I want to use eight of it here, and I'm going to hold two minutes back for rebuttal at the end after we've heard the public hearing, if we've had public comment. We'll then have to open it up to public comment, and we'll have 10 minutes, a minimum of 10 minutes for those who are in favor of the application, and a minimum of 10 minutes for those who are opposed. Again, you have to have a comment card. We'd ask you to present a comment card to us. We need it for the record. We've also been asked how much time you each have. And what I've always said is, please be aware that a lot of people have to speak, and a lot of people want to speak. But we're going to give everybody, we're going to set a three-minute timer for each speaker. We also understand that this commission wants to hear everybody that's here. So as long as it's, we're not getting the same story, and we feel that it's productive for the public, and we feel that it's productive for us to help us make our decision, we're going to keep, we're going to give all sides an equal amount of time and the necessary time. But we are, it's 10 minutes for those opposed, those 10 minutes for those in favor, three minutes per speaker, unless we, as I say, as a commission, feel there's more to be heard, and someone here makes a motion to extend the time. And again, if we do, we'll extend it for everyone and for fairness. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing after everyone's had a chance to speak, and it'll be a time for us as commissioners to ask the staff questions for clarification. We can ask the applicant, or we can ask anyone who has spoken for clarification. So hopefully, we'll have enough time without, you know, spending the whole night. We'll have enough time to really understand how you, as citizens, residents, and neighbors feel, and we'll have an understanding of the applicant and what they're trying to accomplish. Okay, we'll then vote on the matter, and our vote is a recommendation, as I said earlier, to the city council. And we'll give you the date and time of the city council meeting with the, when we hear the case. All right, so the first item on the agenda is RZ 13-12, which is Atlanta Resource, I'll read this one, Susan, if you want. Atlanta Resource Enterprises, LLLP, rezoning request from R100, single-family residential to OCR office commercial residential at 1296, 1302, and 1304 Kendrick Road to expand and bring into compliance an existing parking lot. That item, which was originally advertised, has been taken off the agenda for this evening. The signs were taken down, and I believe anyone who has commented, I think you notified or are in the process of notifying the adjoining property owners, do you want to make a comment on that?
Anyone who sent an email in regarding this case received an email back identifying for them that this was no longer on the agenda, that there was actually a staff error in that the minimum filing for this zoning is two acres, and we did not catch that this was not two acres. So we did send emails back to those who had forwarded emails to us. We did remove the sign. We also will be, we did post it on the web as well, and we will be sending an additional letter out just for clarification because of the December 17th meeting, to again, send a notice out to all the property owners to let them know that the meeting, the hearing will not occur on the 17th.
All right, so it's clear that not only are we not hearing it this evening, but the city council will not hear it on December 17th.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
They will not, this case will not be heard.
Okay, so if there's anything to be done, if the applicant re-applies or whatever, that's, it's a whole new case.
It's a brand-new case.
Okay. Any comment anybody wants? Okay, so that's item number one is been dispensed with. I'll comment, that's not a usual occurrence on this, so that we wanted to make sure that if anybody was here for that, everybody did hear what was going on and where we are going with that. So, and we apologize for any inconvenience that, you know, took place, has taken place. All right, the next case on the agenda is RZ 13-13, and you want to read that? I'll let you.
Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission, this is rezoning petition, RZ 1313. The project name and applicant is Ryland Homes Eric Masachi. The property is located at 1424, 1428, and 1423 Sylvan Circle, and 2396, 242404 Cusawati Drive. The site contains 3.374 acres, is currently zoned R75. The requested rezoning is RA8, and the owners of the property are Alan J. Fields, Stephen C. and Joanne C. Fields, and William T. Fields. The owner or the petitioner's intent is to rezone the subject property from R75 to RA8 for a seven-lot, single-family detached residential development.
The, we'll probably say this twice, just to make sure everybody understands that we make this very clear. The city council is going to hear this case on Tuesday, December 17th, at 4:30 in the afternoon at Oglethorpe University, Lupton Hall. And we stress that because that is not their, the location that they have been at in the past. So we will pass on our recommendations to the city council, and it will be on the city council agenda, Tuesday, December 17th, at 4:30, Oglethorpe University, Lupton Hall.
And I'm going to say it one more time.
Please.
So let me just say that first, the applicant has requested a deferral. And the Planning Commission does not have the authority to grant a deferral. Only the council has the authority to grant a deferral. Therefore, the public hearing will be held tonight before you, the Planning Commission, so that you may pass your recommendation on to the mayor council. Now, having said that, and saying that I'm going to say it a third time, I just want to make sure that the public is aware that on December the 17th, this application was advertised for 7:00 PM, in that we were just recently made aware that the council had some festivities planned, and that that is our one-year anniversary. Therefore, as the chairman indicated, this item will be on the council agenda at 4:30 PM on the 17th at Oglethorpe in the Lupton Auditorium.
Okay. We might, we might say that one more, you know, after.
I know, one more time. And we also will.
I'm going to ask, Susan, if you would stop for a second. I'm going to ask everybody if they would just respectfully, just, I realize everybody thinks they're kind of whispering, but we can hear an awful lot up here, so please, go ahead, Susan.
We will do our level best to place stickers on the sign to note the location and time change. We also will send a letter out to those that receive the letter with the new time and location. So we'll do our very best to make sure everyone is aware, and also will be on the web.
Okay.
Now, having said that, this request for rezoning is on a 3.374-acre tract of land. Actually, I believe, though, that, Mr. Hunderd?
Yes. I need to recuse myself in this case, and I'm not sure where you want me to go exactly or how.
I just thanked him.
My wife is a Jason property owner, so.
Okay, so we're going to, yeah, I think just.
I would recommend that you, I would recommend that you go into this room, and then we will come and acquire you after work's complete.
We promised not to forget you back there.
I just, I just looked up and remembered that you were sitting there.
Yeah, I was wondering when we were going to do that. We also probably ought to note for the record that, yeah, we probably ought to note for the record that with Commissioners Francore and Schmidt not here, and now Commissioner Hunderd recusing himself, we still have a quorum of.
That's correct.
Of four commissioners. So, all right, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
The 3.374-acre tract of land is currently heavily wooded with generally steep topography, essentially comprising the site in its entirety. Two creeks converge on the property and effectively bisect the development into east and west portions. I believe we have a site plan. The proposed layout of the development would show three lots fronting on Sylvan Circle with additional, individual curb cuts, and four lots sharing a single access point off of Cusawati Drive via a private access driveway. A large open space that may be potentially landlocked is shown on the site plan, centrally located on the subject property. The applicant's letter of intent indicates the demolition of existing homes and accessory structure to allow for seven reconfigured lots on which single-family detached homes will be constructed. The department notes that several lots, 1, 2, and 4, may not comply with the 60-foot lot width requirement of the RA8 zoning district. Additionally, four of the seven proposed lots would be impacted by the 75-foot undisturbed stream buffer, and would require variances to encroach into the stream buffer. In regard to surrounding properties, to the north, the property is zoned R75 and is occupied by a single-family residential. East across Cusawati Drive, the property's zoned R75 and a single-family residential. East across Cusawati is also RA8, which is a single-family residential.
Excuse me one second, John. Will you bring that back, the previous map up that shows the zone?
And then east across Sylvan Circle is R75, a single-family residential. South of the property is zoning RM85, which is multifamily residential. And south across Cusawati is R75 zoning, which is a single-family, as well as south RA8, a single-family. The comprehensive land use plan that the city adopted by virtue of DeKalb County identifies the area as traditional neighborhood character area, and that plan envisions the area for traditional single-family to preserve the style and appeal of older traditional neighborhoods. Per the requested zoning, the applicant seeks to increase the number of lots from six lots currently to seven. We do believe that the proposed single-family use is suitable, given surrounding zoning and development. However, it does appear that the subject property under current zoning has economic uses presently zoned. In regard to adverse impact, adverse impact on nearby properties could be anticipated considering that the proposed development would establish substantially smaller minimum lot sizes and minimum heated floor area inconsistent with immediately adjacent properties zoned R75. In regard to changed conditions, the adjacent residential properties maintain larger lot size requirements than the applicant's proposed zoning classification of RA8. Additionally, adjacent properties zoned R75 have a minimum heated floor area of 1,600 square feet, and nearby RA8 properties have been conditioned to larger minimum heated floor areas than compared to the proposed residential development, ranging from 1,600 square feet to 2,000 square feet. The applicant's proposed minimum heated floor area of 1,200 square feet would suggest that the proposed development would not be suitable at the requested location. In addition, the department would note that the proposed rezoning request may present some adverse environmental impact to the existing stream and its banks that traverse the subject property with the increase of the number of lots from the current six lots to the proposed seven lots, as the new lot configuration would place Lot 4 entirely within the 75-foot undisturbed stream buffer. There are no such known historic building sites, districts, or archaeological resources identified or known by staff to be on or near the property. To date, the city has not received response from DeKalb County offices or the DeKalb County school system related to potential impacts that may arise as part of this request. The city public works department did indicate that the installation of a stormwater management system is required, including detention, water quality, channel protection, and downstream analysis. If the downstream discharge is a city stormwater system, then a capacity analysis is required at the time of the land disturbance permit. The public works department did indicate that post-construction stormwater facility maintenance agreement will be required, and that the site is within a mile of the north fork of Peachtree Creek, which is an impaired stream, and therefore additional best management practices will be required per state guidelines at the time of the issuance of the land disturbance permit. The Brookhaven Police Department has indicated that the development should have no impact on current police service and will not require additional personnel. The staff has recommended denial of this request for rezoning, based on the, we stipulated the staff report and the summary that has been provided here tonight. You have in your packet, I believe, received comment, comment and opposition letter. In the event that, in the event that the city council were to approve this request, the staff has outlined eight conditions that we believe they should consider. I don't know that it's imperative to go into those tonight. They are listed here in the report, in that we have recommended denial. If you, if you wish for me to outline those, I can do that.
Well, if any of the commissioners would like to hear, have a question, we'll come back to the record.
And that report has been made available. It is in the back of the room. It is on the web.
All right.
And that completes the staff report.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the staff, or you won't hold them until they, we come back to the record? Okay. So we will hear from, let's see, who is speaking on behalf of the applicant tonight?
Good evening. I'm Rex Bray, representing Planners and Engineers Collaborative, 350 Research Court, North Frost, Georgia.
I'm sorry, say your name one more time. I apologize.
Rex Bray, representing, right, Planners and Engineers Collaborative, 350 Research Court, North Frost, Georgia, 30092. At this time, you clearly heard there were some issues with this property. We're requesting deferral, so we may meet with neighbors, meet with the staff, and work out any issues in order to develop the property or move forward.
Okay. Okay. Are you having more, or you can hold your time, or, I say, we are going to hold. I mean, our, the process, which is probably as interesting to us as it is to anybody, but that is the process that municipalities like Brookhaven, you know, we will have the, you know, you've made the application, we're here-
Oh, I understand.
And we're going to hold the public, public hearing tonight. So, I'll, you know, it's your time.
No, I understand. I found out an hour ago to attend this, so that's where I am.
Okay.
And I wish I could offer more-
No.
-to defend the project. I can't.
Okay. Well, you can reserve your time, if you'd like to, would you like to reserve-
I think I should.
All right, then.
Yeah, yeah.
Fine.
Very good.
John, how much time then he'll have, how much time if he would like to, or then?
43 seconds.
Okay, fine.
I have a question.
Okay, well-
I have a question for Susan.
Ms. Bray?
Susan. No, it's for Susan.
Okay.
Sorry. You've recommended denial.
Yes, ma'am.
They've asked for a deferral.
Yes, ma'am.
The chance, and I'm just, chances of some sort of change in this is fairly, or potential, that there'll be a change. So, we're going to hear public comment tonight. Let's just pretend that the council's votes to defer are as requested. Will we have a chance for more public comment as the plans change, or will it go directly to the council?
This, this plan, this proposed, this request will go directly to the council.
Okay.
They're going to ask for deferral. It would be up to the city council as to whether they would want to defer it back to you, but-
They could.
They could, but it's, it's up to the council as to whether they would defer it back.
If they defer it back to us, would we have public hearing again? I'm trying to figure out if we're wasting these guys' time. No disrespect to y'all, and we want to hear what you want to say, but it sounds like developer wants to have more conversations with the neighborhood, so that this information may change.
Procedurally, you need to hold the public hearing tonight.
Procedurally, I understand that, but procedurally, potentially, it would come back, we would hold another hearing on it? How would that work?
You would not be required, I don't know if this is on.
It's on.
You would not be required to hold the public hearing, but I would recommend that if there's a change, that you hold a public hearing.
Okay. Which we would want to do.
I think what we're hearing is that, it's the city council, so we would make our recommendation. We will, we'll forward what we hear, based on what we hear tonight, we'll forward a recommendation to the city council. Part of their recommendation could be requesting them to send it back to us. They could, they could either do that or not do that, is what we're hearing.
That's correct.
It's the city council, it's being a legislative process, not a judicial process, if I get that correct, that, remember that for our training? That it, the city council gets to decide what they want to do with it.
I just don't want to waste all these folks' time, that's all. That's what I was asking.
All right.
And then, I guess we would want to request, no matter how this goes, when it goes to council, that depending on their vote, it comes back to us for another hearing.
Right.
Can we do that?
All right. Be sure to speak into the microphone if you can. So, John, Commissioner Funny, did you have?
I'm not sure what you just said, Mrs. Cameron.
Depending on how the council votes, if they choose to defer, can we request that they defer it back to us, so then we can have more public hearing on it?
You can make that request, but the council will have to decide what they feel they need to do.
No, I understand that. They are the final decision-makers, but we still can make that request formally.
You can make that request.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm looking at this from a different angle, being that the developer has asked for a deferral, and he stated that he wanted to be able to have conversation with the community, so that we're not wasting time. And I know this is being recorded, I would appreciate it, and I know we can't say it all here tonight, because now, all of the developers are not here, but it would be respectable to us and the citizen if they speak with the community before coming here, because when it reaches our desk, we can't defer, as you mentioned, Susan. And I think, I know, Mr. Gray, you have been put in a position at the last hour, but Brookhaven is not a sleeping neighborhood. We're all aware of what's coming and what's going to be brought before us. So, I think it's wise for the developer to have conversation before it makes it to this point, because at this point, we cannot defer this activity. The city council can, but we have to make a decision based upon what's in front of us, and out of respect of our time, as well as our citizens' time, I think it would be well-welcome that those conversations are held prior to it reaching our desktop.
Good. Anybody?
Mr. Commissioner, I just have a question.
Sure.
I think you can answer that. So, is the decision put before us tonight, us?
Well, we're going to hear public comment first.
Whether to deny or not, we don't really have a decision to defer.
Your, your role tonight is to hold the public hearing and pass a recommendation based on the application before you to the mayor council.
Okay. As it's, okay, thank you.
All right. So, with that, we will open the public hearing. Again, if anybody wants to make a comment in favor of this application, or, again, please, we'll need comment cards with, before you speak, so, who's got it? Ben or John, who's got cards? Does anybody have cards? No, I mean, have anybody submitted?
I have them, I have them.
I'm sorry. The cards are in, the blank ones are in the back, the ones that are filled out here, so we'll call somebody.
I'm looking very quickly. I do not have a card in support.
Okay. So, we'll start with anyone who would like to speak in opposition, and you want to call the first name?
The first name is Catherine Nash.
Okay. And again, we'll, you know, limit your time, you know, we want to give you enough time to-
I understand.
-help us understand your position, but we'll, we'll have a, you know, do what we can. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Catherine Nash. I live at 1386 Noel Drive, northeast Atlanta, 30319. This is, this is an area of natural habitat for ducks, geese, fish, frogs, turtles, birds, owls, goldfinches, woodpeckers, insects, rabbits, raccoons, opossum, and they will all be destroyed. This information or data was collected from volunteers of the BFCA, the Brookhaven Field Civic Association. It represents a mere fraction of the species information collected. Once forested regions are destroyed, we can't get them back. It contains old-growth trees and rare plants, some which may not be found anywhere else. The trees provide oxygen that we all need to breathe. I see our sources of oxygen dwindling every day in this area. My daughter has asthma. It has gotten worse and worse every year because we don't have clean air to breathe. Increased emissions from the increase in cars has not been any help to her condition. Increased cars from the additional housing intensification will decrease our property values because of smog. The watershed will be violated. Fish, flora, and fauna will suffer. Flooding possibilities will increase dramatically. Soil erosion of building foundations becomes probable. The impact on the stream will be devastating, and the stream should not become a pipe. Cusawati Road, which changes names to L.J., is a major corridor for traffic flow. Many people depend on Cusawati to get to Briarwood, which leads to the access road for I-85, though it helps many people get to our most important artery. Thus, it helps many people get to our most important artery, I-85. If we increase the traffic flow with more residents, we are putting too much stress on a small road at its most dangerous curve and downward slope in the road. We have already got new additional residents adding to that stress from the new apartments on Dresden and L.J. I believe there are approximately 50 units, I can't confirm that. This will just add a need for widening the roads of L.J. and Cusawati. The dangerous curve, combined with more cars, may lead to deaths. This change in the density of traffic will represent additional road improvement expenses. High-density housing is not going to help lower stress in our neighborhood. It is going to depreciate home values because of the potential flood damage, insurance costs, and crowding. I have written many other things here, but I would like to drop to the bottom. Once upon a time, there was a greedy developer who built a house with the outdoor swimming pool higher than the sliding back door to the kitchen. The first time it rained, the pool overflowed, cascaded down the cement between the pool and the house, and then water flowed into the sliding glass doors in the brand-new kitchen. Water does flow downward. That stream on that property runs down to the intersection where Cusawati becomes L.J. It doesn't take much imagination to figure out that flooding is a possibility. In conclusion, I oppose the rezoning petition.
Thank you very much. Would you tell me your last name one more time? I thought, it was Catherine, I know, but-
Nash.
Nash, thank you. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right, next, do we have somebody?
I have Ann McAllister.
Hi, I'm Ann McAllister, 2407 Cusawati Drive, Atlanta, 30319. I live right across from the proposed property, and while, you know, people may say, since I live on a smaller lot currently on the A-8 zoning, I don't have a stream in the back of my yard.
Sorry, 2404?
2407.
2404.
The first one in the dark green. It's a smaller lot. I can't imagine keeping consistency with the neighborhood and have anything smaller than mine. Still, I have a huge 60-year-old tree in my backyard that was maintained when they built, so keeping the character of the neighborhood. To me, the property across, you know, would love to have some houses there, but houses built to fit the neighborhood, not encroach on the current screen, stream. And with the number of trees there, you know, I'm just concerned they're going to clearcut the whole thing, and the owls that live there that I hear every night are going to not be there anymore. So, I echo the concern about flooding. I have seen that corner of L.J., Cusawati, and Cardikey be underwater when there is a downpour. Several of our neighborhood associations have sent pictures around of, here's what happens in my yard when it rains. You know, water coming up to people's slides and just overflowing, so anything that's going to challenge an already stressed system is going to be an issue. So, I agree. I oppose this development under its current form, and hope they will make modifications to make it more acceptable, and not, you know, risk for other properties further downstream.
Thank you for your comments.
Betsy Eggers.
Is it Eggers?
Eggers.
Eggers.
I'm Betsy Eggers, and I'm married to the man in the other room.
Who's hiding away who we promised not to forget? If you forget him, that's your problem.
It's my house. It's my house. I own the duplex at 2408, right next door to the property on Cusawati Drive, and I live on Tugalu Drive, about seven houses down from the property in question, and I strongly support the denial. I have-
You're going to be interrupting 240, the duplex is where, it's not the multifamily corner?
Not at the corner, it's directly north, 2408. It was grandfathered in, it was built in the 50s. I'm against the rezoning for reasons already stated, but I have four pieces of advice. One is to the owners. Helen Owens was the librarian at the library for many years, and her kids now own the property, and they need to recognize that most of this property is not buildable. And when you see three and a half acres or 3.3 acres, you think, ooh, we can get this many houses, but it can't, because most of it is unbuildable because of the flood plain. So, that's the first thing, my advice. My second is to the developer, and that is, don't build a weird, small road off of an existing street and make little lots there, when you can build houses right on Cusawati and have decent lots. That is just very poor business acumen and poor planning to turn your back on the neighborhood like that. It's really important to keep a good streetscape, and houses sell really easily when you do that. When you do this kind of plan, people don't want to buy little houses on weird, private roads. The third piece of advice I have is to the city, and that is to begin to insist that developers meet with neighbors before the planning department makes a recommendation. That was done in the past with the county, and it makes sense to do it that way, I think, so that neighbors aren't just coming at this point so far down the road to hear this. The fourth one is one that I just thought of, looking at this map again, and this is advice going to the legal department of the city, and that is that these lots have been reconfigured, they aren't the originally platted lots, and so, this is not grandfathered in under R-75 with the way it's shown in this weird configuration. A lot of those lots were subdivided, and if you go back far enough, for the original lots, they were very different than that. So, the, the legal folks may want to take, those, those are not how they were configured, those six lots, when you look at further back. So, that's just an interesting little legal thing that, I'm not a lawyer, but y'all, that's my advice, to look at that as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't think any of us, no, none of us are lawyers, attorneys here, but thank you for your comments. Next, how much time do we have? And we want to, again, we want to be sure everybody gets a chance to-
Two minutes, 30 seconds.
Two, okay. Unless somebody has a, well, let's take the next person.
Jenny Troutman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Jenny Troutman. I live at 2390 Cusawati Drive, which is the adjoining south property. It looks like it's-
Corner one.
Yeah, the corner one there. It's actually three lots, but it shows there's one lot. And I am opposed to the development, and I would like to have, I'd like to see this denied. There, you've heard most of the reasons why I'm opposed, but specifically, where I now have a single, where I now have my house built and I have a private lot, if the, if the developer were to go forward, there would be a road that would make four houses facing the side of my home and my lot, and that would significantly depress or diminish the value of my property. Were I ever to choose to develop my property and take advantage of the three lots that I have there, I would now have a corner lot that would require a very different setback due to that little lot. So, for that reason, and also for the reasons of this area being prone to flooding, as you've heard, and you'll probably hear more about, I specifically oppose this development. But I would also like to say that if you should consider, if you, if the proposal should proceed, I'd like you to consider two other notes. The survey that was presented has obvious errors that are in conflict with my property lines, and I have submitted an attachment that shows the errors according to the original plat and to my property, to my latest survey. And secondly, if this was to be rezoned, then my property could probably also be rezoned as R-88. However, the only buyer that could take advantage of that would be the developer, and the developer would be able to take advantage of it specifically because they would own the road. So, if this were to proceed, I definitely would want to have the opportunity to have fair contract for access to the road that they propose. So, in sum, I am opposed, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Troutman. How many other, how many other speakers do we have? Susan? We're not going to have enough time with the 10 minutes unless somebody makes a motion to-
I make a motion-
I'm sorry.
Four. Well, actually, no, there are five, I think. There are five. I apologize. Someone just handed-
I think you're about to have six.
Someone just handed me a note.
All right. So, we're either out of time unless, well, we are out of time unless we have a motion.
I make a motion that we extend the public hearing time by 10 minutes.
I'll second the motion.
All right. For clarification, I guess, any comments? John, do you have any? That we would offer 10 minutes to the, to those, oppose, those support, and the applicant. So, if you want, we're not going to, we're not favoring one side or the other here, we're trying to understand, so.
The only request, Mr. Chairman, would be, instead of the three-minute rule, make it a two-minute rule. I'm just taking 10 and dividing by five.
All right. If you'd be willing to-
Limiting to two minutes.
I would accept that friendly amendment.
All right, so, the motion is, we're going to extend this thing by 10 minutes for everybody. We're going to ask everyone to hold their comments down to two minutes, so we can, we can do that. Any other discussion on it?
No, sir. No, sir.
All right.
I would second that.
Okay. Great, so we, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we've got 10 more minutes, and then for those who are in opposition, and then we'll come back to the applicant or anybody who supported. And please, next speaker, and we'd ask you, hold your time to two minutes, please.
Jennifer Heath.
I'm sorry, last name was Heath?
Heath, H-E-A-T-H.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll be real quick. I currently reside at 1416, which is directly behind the property that you're looking at. 1351 has the actual creek area.
It's on the silver circle, sorry.
Yeah, I'm on the circle. Right. I am about to finish redeveloping the house on 1412, so we have two properties in my family right there. Longtime resident, supercaven, very concerned not with the development of single houses on the property, but anything that encroaches into that stream area, I think, is a bad decision. Lived there a number of years. We do have high water that comes up in the, what is it, the 100-year rains that we've had in the past. But more than that, we're losing trees in Brookhaven left and right. We have all experienced the frustration with the Dresden Drive clearcutting. This is one of the few areas where we have a fairly large area in a creek bed with old grow trees. We have lots of owls and things like that, and I know that everyone's tired of hearing the environmental, the owls need to be protected, but it's a quality of life issue. And along with everything everyone else says about property diminishment and things like that, I think it would just be bad to put that seventh out there. Fine with six.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Julia Heath.
I thought it was sister.
You think you're nervous over there, come up here and be.
This is not easy, but I grew to, I went to school with William.
Speak into the microphone because they're going to try to.
William Fields. I went to school with him. I'm shamed. I can't believe, I mean, we all played down at that creek. I can't believe he would do this to it. It is a beautiful piece of land. Hawks fly, and that keeps down on rats in an urban area. Think about that. Owls and hawks eat rats. So I'm very against it. My property touches the creek, 1416, that odd little thing, it goes right to the creek. Originally, these lots were all built to go to the creek so you could water your livestock. Strange, but true. Anyway, it's a beautiful place. Go down there, look at it, and think about what they want to do. I'm all for developing a property. I'm a property owner, but it should be done. You should be a steward of the land, and that is not, what they have going there is not stewardship. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Bromley.
Stephen Bromley.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Too big for you.
Hold on, let me just, Stephen Bromley.
The lesser-known brother of Stephanie.
I think we figured out it wasn't.
I live in a great house on 2374 Cusawati, which is right next to Jenny's property there. And I agree with all of you.
Where are we looking?
2374.
I walk up and show. No, other side of the street. Down, 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 right? Up, right there.
There we go, okay, great, thank you.
And I agree with all of you on the environmental issues. I believe in a red-tipped hawk.
Address it, yeah. We'd ask you to address.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was just agreeing with them.
I know.
All right. I'm not going to add, take up any more time, but I think it will just adversely affect the value of my home by what they're proposing to put in there, these houses. I mean, I live in a big, beautiful house. What I understand it's going to be, is going to be a very small house that's not fitting into the neighborhood. It just doesn't seem like what's going on around us. So I'm opposed to the proposal.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. I'm tired of seeing.
My name is Alvin Bryant. I live at the corner of Cusawati and Tugalu Drive, 1385. And for point of reference, right through that intersection, within probably five, six feet of my property going southeastern beyond Cusawati, is where the original DeKalb County maintenance went awry. Most of the streets in DeKalb County are 22, 26 feet wide. From that point on, Cusawati pretty much digresses to almost what we would call a right-of-way access. And that's my first bone of contention, that before anything else even be considered, that that road is a serious issue that needs to be addressed. I am opposed to any zoning request or any variances that would be tied into that property. And my main point would be because the road is an issue as well as the environmental concerns. I also have documented video evidence of the flooding prior to the 500-year flood we experienced in 2009. So for multiple reasons of which everyone has stated, which I agree with, as well as a property owner and one who has purchased and sold property, all based on the historical existing zoning, that I think as property owners, that historical existing zoning, except for when it's some emergency, which I've yet to see, is required that it remain intact. Because when you purchase your property, you're also purchasing that zoning. So again, I oppose it, and I extremely express that the county planners take a look at that road. Thank you.
I know you meant city planners at this point. We'd like to go back to the county, but I don't think, for something like this, but I don't think they'll let us.
Thomas Porter.
My name's Thomas Porter. I live at 1420 Canucci Drive, which is actually around the corner from this site. And I'll make this quick. I simply wanted to add my voice to opposition to this. I think that it is terribly offensive.
Would you speak into the mic? I'm sorry, they're trying to.
I think it is trying to be.
I keep watching Trey over there.
Yeah, they can't hear.
Gotcha.
How's that? Anyway, I live around the corner. I agree with the staff recommendations for all of the reasons that they say, and I also have great concern about the stream buffer. But I also think it's a disingenuous application to come in and request a rezoning and then say, oh, by the way, I also need at least two variances for the zoning that they're requesting. I just think it's a bad deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. How many more do we have, Susan?
We have one more card. I'm not, it's not really marked as opposition or favor. It's, I think it's a question. And the topic listed here is the change in the council meeting time on December 17th.
Who is it?
It's Denise Johnson.
Well, you want to add, well, well, you're, are you, just ask the question.
Okay.
That was the last, that was the last.
Can you come to the mic?
That's this case.
Please come to the mic.
I'm Denise Johnson, and I live at 1277 Peachtree View. Just hearing tonight about the change in the meeting time from 7:00 to 4:30, that really concerned me because that means that a meeting with the city council, where many people want to express their opinions about this important issue, are going to be working. 4:30 is during working hours, and already with the crunch of the holidays and everything, I really, I don't know if this is the correct forum, but I would like to express opposition to that. I think if a meeting this important cannot be held at a time when people can come, that, I don't like that. I don't think, it doesn't, it doesn't look good. That's just my initial, you know, off-the-cuff feeling right now, and I just wanted to let you all know.
Well, putting it on public record, which you just did, is the right way to do it. We didn't set it, but you, if you want to know if you, that was the right thing to do, the answer is yes. So, all right, no more?
No more comment cards.
Okay, so we've got to, before we open it up for our questions and stuff, we need to go back, since there was nobody in support of it, it was just the applicant, and the applicant gets.
Rebuttal.
Rebuttal time. I think you heard some things tonight, so from your neighbors.
Yes, I did, and I appreciate their input. Let's just go down a few items that were brought up. Number one, the size of the units. 1,200 square feet is 30 by 40. That's got to be one level. So these have to be two-story homes, which is 2,400 square feet, which clearly is over the 1,600 square-foot limit for even R-75. So, but that's one issue there.
Can everybody hear?
Yep.
Okay. No?
I'll speak up then.
Yeah, please do.
All right. And again, just going down the list here, the stream buffer or the stream, is my understanding, and certainly in DeKalb, and I'm certain it is in Brookhaven, that the stream is waters of state. So you're going to have to have a 25-foot buffer on either side, which is a state buffer, and then another 50 on top of that, which is a Brookhaven buffer on each side. So we cannot touch that area. So unless we get a variance from city Brookhaven. The traffic, I understand traffic concerns, but right now, there's six lots. We're adding one more lot, one more resident. So I just can't see significant traffic from one resident there of flooding. The city code requires that we have detention, water quality, channel protection, and we plan to have that on this development, which will minimize any flow from our site. Subdivision plan, we will definitely subdivide the property should this go through, so we'll take care of that. The survey issue, we'll certainly look into that. We don't want any, any problems with this survey issues at all, or any survey problems at all. And then as far as the, Ms. Cameron made a great suggestion. If we could possibly have this deferred and then come back to the council here, or excuse me, the group, thank you, then in the interim, we could work with both staff and the neighbors, all the neighbors that were here tonight, work with all of them to make sure we have a plan that works for everyone, because I understand the significance of everything in that neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and we don't want to take anything away from that. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, well, we're going to, we appreciate everyone's comments. We're all trying to, you know, figure out what's the right thing to do, as I said, for the applicant, the homeowner, the property owner, the neighbors, and the community, because the decisions and the recommendations we make tonight stay with us for a long time, I think, as someone pointed out. So we'll open it up to the commissioners. Anybody have any questions for either the, either staff or the applicant or any of the, any of the speakers?
Mr. Chairman, since it's my last night, I feel obliged to have one last stand. The, I'm just trying to understand, I get the process of the denial. We denied it, then the applicant still, he can just reapply in the future, is that correct?
If we recommend, if we recommend to the city council that this application be denied, then it is up to the city council to decide whether or not they want to deny it, and if they do, there is a waiting period, I believe, of two years?
Two years.
Two years. If they approve it despite what we think, or if we, if we vote and recommend they approve it and they deny it, I mean, they are the legislative body. They're the ones who elected, that people elected, and they're the ones who will make the final decision. So we're listening and trying to do the best we can make a recommendation. So the answer is they can do whatever they want, but I hope they would. I would hope that they would.
And Mr. Chairman, I also do want to reiterate the lady, Rose, her comment, that it's a concern of mine, the short notice and the time of day, that would make it more appealing for applicants to come forward during business hours than citizens who are doing their own businesses.
Then, of course, the city council meeting, city council sets their own time, and generally their time is at 7, has been at 7:00 or 7:30, so I can't comment on, I don't think we can comment on why they chose to. I think it was conflict with the city and the celebration, but we're holding our meeting at 7:00 at night, and we're good. Any, I have some questions, I have some questions, but I'll let you guys go for sure.
I have a question for.
This is Commissioner John Funny.
Mr. Bray.
For you.
Yes.
You have a question for you.
I have a question for you.
Can you approach?
Come on, he's gonna, this is Commissioner Funny, has a question for you. Mr. Funny?
Yes, sir.
I've driven through this area, and from looking at the position of the lots, I don't understand why is it that it cannot be developed under the R-75 to be consistent with the city's comp plan that has been inherited from DeKalb County? With the driveway off of Cusawati, I had a hard time saying that, Drive, why is it that, what's the reason for not developing as it is currently zoned so that it's compatible with the surrounding properties?
And Mr. Funny, that's a great question, but I do not have the answer. I wasn't part of the planning or the design process. I can certainly have an answer the next time we meet.
I expect you'll get asked again.
All right, good. Thank you for your answer.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Excuse me, just procedurally, Mr. Chairman, did you close the public hearing?
The, excuse me, we have a, we are going to close the, before we ask any more questions. We have given everyone the, those in support, we've given the applicant the time, we've given those in opposition and those in support equal amount of time, and the public hearing is closed, and it is now open for the commissioner's questions, and I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I need to restate my question?
No, I don't think so.
All right. Shannon, do you have any words, Cam? All right, then I have a few, I have a few questions. Number one is on the, on the, it's a good point, on the, on Cusawati, the narrowing of Cusawati, when I drove by there, I was afraid there wasn't a car going to come by the other way, but, but is that public right-of-way?
What about the Tugalu?
I'm sorry, no, I'm asking the staff. I'm asking Ms. Cameron. Ms. Cannon.
One second, please.
Okay. I mean, it looked like public right-of-way, but I, but a question is, was the county, did we bring it across as public right-of-way or something other than that?
I'm not seeing anything that indicates that it is not public right-of-way. What I'm looking at indicates that it is public right-of-way.
The other, I guess, comment I have is that to everyone is, I went by there and I saw, I looked at the stream and I looked at the property, and I, you know, everybody likes green, everybody likes trees, everybody likes, you know, animals, but we, somehow we have to figure out how to balance that with the rights of the property owner as well. I mean, we all, you know, we've been through many of these, so I've been through many of these over the years with the county, and, you know, you look and nobody wants, everybody likes to, everybody likes to have the undeveloped land in their backyard, but doesn't belong to, that belongs to a property owner. So whatever we decide up here, we understand that we all face it as citizens. I mean, there's just no question about that. Nobody wants, we don't want the six properties, let alone seven. And I will echo that same question that Mr. Funny asked, and that was, why is this not economically feasible? I can't, I don't know how you shoehorn six properties into that, let alone seven. I did, I saw some of the other properties that have been developed up there, I saw some of the fences looked like there were zero, zero outlines on the fences across the street, and some of the beautiful, very nice homes, but I can't imagine getting any closer than currently there. I'd also encourage, I think it was, can't remember, was Julia Heath or who mentioned that there was a problem with the, thought there was a problem with the survey, and what the records have with the city, I'd encourage you to, no matter what happens here this evening or what happens with the council, if you feel you've got an error, get that corrected, because what's on the record, what's on those maps, is what we have to rule on, not on what somebody thinks used to, used to be or was.
I believe that was Ms. Troutman.
Ms. Troutman?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Jenny Troutman, was that who it was?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'd encourage you to, you know, no matter what happens here this evening, or what happens on the 17th with the council, if you feel there's something has to be fixed, you need to work on that and not wait, because we're going to have to rule on what we see on the maps and what's in front of us. I'm sorry, there's no. I'm sorry, there's no, not a-
May I ask a question?
No, no, I'm sorry, I wish there were, but we closed the public hearing part. It's one of those strange things about these public hearings. All right, any, do we have any other questions for anyone? Do we have a, then I'll entertain a motion on, on this, on application RZ13-13?
I'd like to make a notion to deny this, of application RZ13-13.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? So the recommend, the motion is to deny RZ13-13. We have a motion, we have a second, and is there any discussion on this motion? All in favor of denying this application, of recommending to the city council, denial of this application? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, this application is going forward to the city council on December the 17th, Tuesday, so it's 4:30 at Old Thorpe University, with our recommendation to deny this, this, this application. We appreciate your, we appreciate your time in this. So I'll give everybody just a second, and then we'll move on. We can get Jack out of there, and then we'll proceed. Let me sneak out there, is there a back door? No, all right. We'll take, there you go. All right, do we have any, so we are back in, we are back in session with, with five commissioners here. We have, by the way, if you're interested, we just voted to deny this RZ13-13. And, see, no ordinances. And do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Before you do, I would like to say, I would like to say happy birthday to the city Brookhaven.
December 17th. Yeah. All right, do I have any other motions? Do I have a motion?
Yes, I have, I'll make, I'll, I'll, Mr.-
I would make a motion to adjourn, so.
I would like to second that emotion, that emotion.
Any discussion about this? Then, all in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we are adjourned. Thank you so much for your time, and we appreciate everything.